This conference will now be recorded.
The conditional use hearing for February 7, 2024. And at this time, I will turn this over to our solicitor, Mr. Hoey.
Thank you. I have some preliminary matters to go over, but while I do that, I invite the applicant up to the front table. Before we begin this evening, a few preliminary matters to review. Is anyone here on behalf of the applicant? Okay, you can come up, sir. While tonight's proceedings are open to the public, this is not a public meeting. This is an administrative hearing, and under the law, there are certain procedures that we need to follow, the chief of which, as you'll see, we have a court reporter here with us this evening, and we're required by law to have a transcript of the proceedings. So as you see, she's taking down everything that everyone's saying. As a result, the golden rule tonight is that only one person can talk at a time. And if someone's asking you a question or responding to a question you asked, please allow them to finish before you offer any type of follow-up. As far as the rest of the procedures, we'll begin with me introducing the hearing and reviewing the legal notice. I'll then identify counsel's exhibits and enter them into the record. We'll identify the applicant, and we'll then identify whether there are any other parties to the proceedings this evening. At this point, I'll turn it over to the applicant, and they'll have the opportunity to present their case. We'll then take testimony from any other parties, and then provide the applicant with the opportunity for any additional rebuttal or additional evidence. At the conclusion of that phase of the hearing, we'll then open it up and allow public comment on the application. Following public comment, we'll close the record, and counsel has 45 days to issue a written decision on the application, though typically counsel takes action at its next meeting, which will be Monday night. Does anyone have any questions on this procedure? Our only hearing this evening concerns the application of appeal of Michael Hughes and Michael Moyer. Based on the application, the applicants are the owners of real property located at 26 East Eighth Street, which is identified as tax parcel number 160007252004. The property located in the neighborhood residential district is approximately 0.06 acres, or 2,585 square feet in size, and improved with an existing commercial building. The applicants propose to operate a health and fitness center at the property, but this is not a permitted use within that zoning district. Consequently, the applicants seek conditional use approval pursuant to Section 318.3 of the zoning ordinance, subject to the general criteria contained in Section A 400.3, to operate a use of the same general character as those permitted by conditional use within the neighborhood residential district, with the same or lesser impact on the community as determined by counsel. Examples of other uses permitted by conditional use in that zoning district include churches, childcare facilities, golf courses, and schools. Prior to tonight's hearing, I marked several exhibits on behalf of counsel. Counsel Exhibit 1 is the zoning conditional use application with attachments. Counsel Exhibit 2 is the legal notice concerning that application. Counsel Exhibit 3 are the proofs of posting, mailing, and publication. And Counsel Exhibit 4 is a copy of the Pottstown Borough Zoning Ordinance. We'll mark those as entered into the record. At this time, one at a time, if you could please identify who's here on behalf of the applicant.
I'm Michael Moyer.
Well, we'll get to that part. At this point, if you could just say and spell your name.
What is it? M-I-C-H-A-E-L-M-O-Y-E-R.
Okay.
And I'm Michael Hughes. M-I-C-H-A-E-L-H-U-G-H-E-S.
Okay. And ask that they both be sworn in. At this point, I will see whether there's anyone else seeking party status for this hearing. I want to remind everyone that if you're just here to offer comment on the application, you can do so at the conclusion of the hearing. If you seek party status, you have a right to present evidence, cross-examine witnesses, and peel the decision. Is there anyone here seeking to participate beyond just offering comment? Okay. Seeing none, the floor is yours, gentlemen.
I'm not sure. We're proposing to open a gym for training in martial arts at 26th East Eighth Street. And I have a plan here. We have hired someone to go through everything with us to present to you guys. And I really don't have a whole lot more questions I'd more inclined to answer than to announce anything.
Okay. Your plan, do you want to hand that up to me?
Also, I've watched the drawing of the apartment.
Yes. All right.
I actually had my father do this. He's a contractor as well. I'm not. I did a terrible job. Please excuse it.
The letter issued by SCF Architecture LLC will mark that as applicant's Exhibit 1. Want to share. And then the revised drawing will mark as A2. Okay. Why don't you begin by explaining your business model and what you're proposing?
All right, so I was a troubled kid. I got a lot of trouble. I sleep with refugees and adults. So I've been training kids for the past couple of years and adults. It worked for me. It worked for a lot of people. I have a kid in the back right there. He's one of my first guys. He's speaking. But we're planning to do something good for the community. And I want to bring in misled youth and just people dealing with stuff. They give them an effect to get all their frustration out. And that's where my heart is, and that's why I want to be there. It's not about me anymore. See, I kind of get a little emotional. That's all I really have to say. Same with him. You know, we both are celebrating. I just celebrated 19 years. Right? So, and this is why we're here. Our business model is basically membership, training, different classes, four, five, six, seven, different levels. 11 o'clock in the morning, I own a shop. I've been in business in Pottstown 25 years or so. I own a shop right up the road at Farmington and Wilson. And so it's real close to where I am. And my son's now running that, and another man that I've been doing 20 years. So I have a lot of free time. I have over 20 years' experience in martial arts and teaching. And the whole thing's going to be about membership. We have a school across the street where there'd be a good shot. Principals have already approached us of working with them, some of the kids there, and maybe entering into some of the gym classes that they have. Both my sons went from the time they were five up until 26 and 22 now. And it was a shop that I kept trying to get people that worked with me to open and do well with. It was Fatigan's for a minute, and then it was another guy had it. And it just got to the point where I'm like, you know, why don't we just open up a school? I was training over here at King Street, hence the name, with Rob and Mike. That's where I met Mike and Lauren, who is Mike's wife-to-be. She's a world champion, and I trained from way back. We just got together on it and said, why don't we just make this place a gym? There was a boxer, Garcia, that gave me that idea in town, that thought about opening that when it was for sale about four years ago, and wanted to make it his own gym. And I don't, he just fell through something happened that he didn't want to, and I think he opened something somewhere else. He's a professional boxer in town. And that gave me the idea, and it's kind of just sat in my head for a long time, and until finally, one day, I was over there training at Rob's place. We're upstairs. It's cold. Like, you know what? You're looking for a place, and I got a spot. We could buy this building, be done with it, and have our own place. And right now, it really looks good. It's put together nicely, and the inside's spotless. I haven't seen a higher work ethic from him and the people in the back there that have put it together. I really haven't done much other than put the deal together and teach. But if you guys ever, we have pictures, whatnot, and Samantha will have everything spelled out for you guys perfectly. It's going to work out well. We're already flooded with people wanting to join. So it's just, it's an upside across the board for everyone. And it takes away that neighborhood. You know, a lot of people weren't happy with the way the cars were parked, with the late hours of the mechanics that were in there. It was always kind of like, when you're walking by, don't let your kids go through there. It's a real shady-looking shop. And I run my shop different up the street. We're well-lit and keep hours and do a good job. So I thought the neighborhood people that were around were all for it when I talked to them beforehand, and just kind of wanting to get a mechanic shop out of there. It's been, from when Yanessa had it, it was kind of under the radar, but no one's been able to make it work since he left. And I don't need another shop. I just added two more bays up there, and we're breaking every record that we didn't think we could break on five bays. So we're keeping business flowing, and I think this will work out really well.
Okay. What are the anticipated hours of operation?
Hours of operation? Well, right now, it's tentative, but 11 to 12 o'clock would be one class at four, five, six, seven. So we would have a kids' class, you know, from, say, nine to 12 ages. Then we would have teenagers, then we would have adults, then we would have advanced.
Right. But what hours would you be open and giving classes?
What hours would we be open?
There's a parade.
Yeah, 11, 12. Open would be open all day, but classes right now would be 11, 11 to 12, and then we'd start again at four, five, six, seven.
Okay.
That's the plan, but it's tentative.
So like 9 to 5, or 9 to 9:00 PM?
No, I would say 9 to 8.
9:00 AM to 8:00 PM?
Yeah.
This was an old garage, right? So what do we have that zoned as now? And how is that different than, and this is basically from that, the way it's zoned now, which would be commercial? How is that different than a multi-use?
Health and, the zoning officer determined this was a health and fitness center, which is a...
Considered commercial use, though?
It would not. I mean, it's commercial in nature, but because it's specifically defined, it's taken out of that general category and treated as a health and fitness center.
Okay.
And, you know, the outside of this building is, you know, 100%. We've talked to the neighbors, willing to help neighbors. We even talked with her about building, putting a fence back up. The guy that she's there before destroyed your fence, disrespected her. So I went and made sure that we would have a good relationship with her. I want to take care of her. She needs anything. She's elderly, and I'm all about helping. That's why I'm doing it. And I want to be a good staple. So that's my half on it. And also, I forgot to mention, I have a young lady in the back, too, and her mother that I've been with for a long time also. So they might have something further on.
Okay. I just want to pin down some specific details, though, for the record. Because if the use is approved, you know, you sort of have to comply with the testimony that's presented today. How many employees do you anticipate having? Do you have a sense of what the class capacity is going to be? Are we talking eight students, 12 students, 20?
The whole thing is, I don't want people lost in transportation. When you have these big, giant classes, people get lost, and they don't give a... So we're going to be smaller.
What off-street parking is provided on the site?
There's, what's the question? Off-street parking, I think there's like... There's not going to be any off-street parking during the day, but in the evening, there's plenty. We have the parking lot, and then we have the side of the building, and the whole front of the school's empty at night.
Right. But onsite, about how many cars could you park there?
In that parking lot, I wrote what we have. I have that there on that piece of paper. You could fit more. I just kind of put what we would probably have in the lot. There will not be a dumpster there. We'd be able to get 15, 20 cars on the lot, my guess. But that's what I put tentatively what we would probably have in the lot. There's like three parking spaces down the side of the building. I think there's like five here, and there's three and five. And then there's off-street parking. There's probably nothing to park. We take advantage of the school, maybe six cars out there. Yeah, we're not going to have a problem. We're not going to use off-street parking. We got rid of the dumpster, as well as the container that was there. That was an ice...
Just one at a time?
No, sorry.
Yeah.
But yeah, we're just going to have a trash can, and that's what we're going to keep inside. We don't really create a whole lot of things. Literally water bottles, maybe snacks.
What type of exterior lighting is on the property currently? And what do you propose?
Massive lighting, right up, two big floodlights on the building on the side. And then we got, there's a, there's a program that the guy came around, really, he came up to shop on Farmington, and then he came down there and gave us a bunch, a whole pallet full of lights. Really nice LED lights. So I have his card, if anyone wanted to use them. But he actually says we have it from PP&amp;L, and you're not, there's no charge for the lights. They're beautiful lights, so it'll be well worth it.
Okay. Could you describe the interior of the building, the floor plan, and then any type of modifications you plan?
There really were none. It was mostly matting. With your mats, yeah, it's together. The mats are down, the floor's down. There's a little office with a waiting room with a display for sweatshirts, gloves, things of that sort. And then the floor, the shop is now matted. Which color coordinated madding.
Walk me through. I walk in the front door.
Oh, you walk in the front door? Yeah, it's on there, but I could walk you through it if you'd like. Right here, if you look, you have a copy of it. So these are my bagwigs that are bolted into the block. All this floor space here is all just mats that I laid down the floor. They're locked in with one-by-threes. I have a boxing ring here. And all they did, all this concrete floor that was exposed, I put rubber gym mats down. No concrete's exposed. Everything's covered. The bathroom's here. There's a kitchen here. And this is my office, which we put a TV, a little stand where we have our gloves and merchandise and stuff. People need stuff. But it's all laid out right here.
Right.
Things on there. It's nice and clean. I want everything to flow well. And that's why, you know, I set this up. This is what I did in my head, and then it all came through, you know, it's very nice. I have pictures in my phone. If you guys want to see pictures, also.
And the floor plan you're referencing is part of the application, correct?
Yes. Did that make sense, the plan that you, can you see that? You should have a copy.
Yes.
Yeah, where you could walk through it. That shows exactly how it's laid out.
Thank you. Do you plan any modifications to the exterior of the building?
Um, just the sign. Yeah, lighting, paint, sign, and then we're going to probably pave the parking lot down the road when we generate some activity. It's going to be nice. It looks like you're a crap hole right now, and we're going to make it look very nice, presentable, and make it look better for the community.
And what signage are you proposing?
Um, I have a picture of it. So there was a pre-existing sign already up there, and I talked to Winter. She says they'll let me do with the size of the pre-existing sign that was on there. It was four by eight is what was on there. And that's my logo, and that's what it would be.
Okay. Well, mark this A3. Does anyone on counsel want to see this?
I started off on King Street. That's why, you know, we're called King Street. The lines, the king of the jungle, now, so that's... And I, you know...
And the prior use was an auto repair garage?
Yes.
And the property has street access and alley access?
Yes.
Does anyone on counsel have any questions for either of the witnesses?
You instruct five and seven-year-olds?
Probably.
So, okay. So you're only going to have a class of about 10 people. Room for nine cars, I think, should be enough. You're not going to need 20 cars.
Yeah, no, no.
So, the only, the only other thing is if it's going to be co-ed, I see one shower here. I don't know in the future if you're going to maybe look to expand into having, like, locker rooms or something, but...
Uh, we talked about doing that down the road, like the kitchen, turning that into a locker room.
That's the only thing I saw. Otherwise, I've driven past that garage.
It says, "Hope" on the back door.
I've driven past that garage multiple times, and it's in my ward. So it's, you sit there, and if you're able to get the alleyway out, because it's like a moonscape, as it is. It's, right now, it's a dirty little property, but it does have potential, you can see.
So if you see the inside, like, wow. Like, it doesn't look like if you look from the outside, like, walking up on it, you're like, man, this is... Bunch of inside.
Okay.
Really nice.
I'll have to swing by someday. This week, maybe.
Does anyone else on counsel have any questions?
Just comment. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
And I'd like a membership.
We're going to have yoga there. You can come down and train with us.
I'd like to. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel has no other questions. Is there anything else you want to offer in terms of the application?
Offer? Well, you're going to get a set of plans from Samantha. And anyone that would have time to come down and want to look at it, I think you'd be impressed.
Okay. We'll admit exhibits A1 through A3 into the record. At this point, is the portion of the meeting for public comment. If there's anyone who wishes to make comment on this application, please come forward to the microphone and clearly state and spell your name for us. And likewise, if there's anyone online that would like to comment, please state your address or put your address in the chat message.
C-A-S-T-Y. From the beginning of this process, this whole King Street Kickboxing World Title, which started a whole three-year drive, and then shut down in 2011. I've come much further ways since then. Developed something very wonderful. I choose wonderful individuals to work with, individuals to just be around. He was very kind in the gym we were at before to take me under his wing, and not only make me a better fighter, but a better champion as well. I'm an individual who has struggled severely with mental health throughout the course of my life. Tried so many different things, diagnosed with generalized anxiety disorder, problems, severe major depression. I've attempted to take my life on through several occasions. I've tried all these different coping mechanisms, both good and bad. I've been in and out of therapy on various medications. I've done bad ones, self-arm, and that will now hold for a while. So I've tried all these things. The only thing that's ever had a lasting positive effect on me is fitness. Boxing, running, weightlifting, anything of that nature, as you put it, counsel. Helping fitness, that's what it is, help. Whatever it is here. And, you know, I'm a very firm believer that if you are not helping somebody, you're not helping somebody. And you're wasting your life, frankly. And Michael Hughes, Michael Moyer, they're individuals who want help. And that is what King Street Kickboxing is about. That's what the program is about. As he said, you know, it's not about money. You know, hear less about that, I won't make any more of it. But if you can take people, or in my situation, as he did, hopefully give them a better opportunity. It's not always an individual who's, I did, dressed nice for you to see me. I was kept in a different place. And through this program, and like, I became such a better man, and I certainly want to be better. So all I'm asking from you guys is that you can give us the same opportunity that opportunity I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wish to offer comment?
My name is Melissa Pennington. It's M-E-L-I-S-S-A-P-E-N-N-I-N-G-T-O-N. My daughter Bailey, she is 15. She's sitting back there. She's a little shy. So she's been training with Mike since she was 12. She started with him four years ago at a different gym in Limerick. Instantly took to him. She was very mousy, very quiet, wouldn't talk to anybody, super self-conscious, not a good, self-confident person. Aside from her not being comfortable getting up today, she's a very different child today. She has generalized anxiety disorder. She has a brother on the spectrum, which contributed to her anxiety. She is not that child anymore, and I solely contribute that to Mike. Him being able to do what he does and love is, it's magic to watch it, to watch him with children. So I apologize. He's so good with them. He's genuine. He highlights their strengths. He gives them reasons to keep coming back to this class, to keep doing what they do. She has really blossomed under him in the four years. She feels confident in herself. She's making friends. She's straight A student, well, not straight A's, mostly straight A's. But she's a great student, always on the honor roll. We have no issues with her at all because of what he's brought out in her. My husband is also a recovered alcoholic. And meeting Mike and realizing the message that he sends, and giving you that replacement behavior, something to do instead of turning to the vice that makes you weak and makes you make really bad decisions, you can turn to yourself and work on yourself and be fit. And watching our daughter do this with Mike gave my husband the inspiration to go back into martial arts. And now he is, again, sober. So he did fall off the wagon several years ago. He's been completely sober and doing great because he sees what this type of fitness can do. It gives you that replacement behavior. It gives you the strength to do something better for yourself. They have a girls' class on Saturdays, 12 to 1. It's an amazing class, super empowering, just for the girls, especially if you're not comfortable training with all the guys. You can show up, and you can be empowered. It's all about positive mindset. So allowing him to continue this dream of his and what he does, you'd be really doing something great for this community. I really feel that. I feel so secure allowing my daughter to train, even in a class with a whole bunch of giant men. She has no qualms walking in that door and sparring with these guys that are three times her size because he gives her that confidence to do so. So I think it would be a tragedy to not allow him to continue this and help this community, especially today where there's so much violence and anger. There's so much drug use. There's so many people dying. There's a better way, and he does everything he can to show them that. So I think it would be in the community's best interest to have Mike continue on this dream and this passion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comment?
I appreciate you all coming and being vulnerable. It's tough to get up and speak, and I can see how genuine you all are, and I'm really glad for your daughter.
Thank you. If there's nothing further than...
So my name is John Membrino, M-E-M-B-R-I-N-O. Am I able to address the conditional use? My daughter owns property. She's a neighboring property. If she can speak for herself, or I can speak on her behalf?
If she's the property owner, she probably should be the one to speak.
My name is Jade, J-A-D-E. The only concern I do have is sharing the alleyway with the property. I do have some concerns with the parking because it wasn't really fully addressed. It kind of just seems like you're going to just let people park wherever they can, especially around times when the schools are letting out and the parents are picking up students. It's already kind of a disaster trying to get through the alleyway. There's been times where I had to just back out and go the other way. So as long as I know for sure that there's going to be designated parking spots. I know the garage that used to be there kind of just let everybody park everywhere, and it didn't work because then the residential properties weren't able to park at their... properties weren't able to park at their garage and things like that. So I just do have some concerns about the parking.
Thank you.
There won't be any problems to park in that property. If you have any issues, I will use my phone number and I will address you immediately.
All right, thank you. Is there any other public comment? All right, if there's nothing else, then at this point we'll close the record. Again, council has 45 days to issue a decision. But typically it's listed for action at the Monday night following the committee, the whole meeting. Correct. We'll consider it adjourned then.
Hearing's adjourned.
Now he's got to fight each one of us.
This conference will now be recorded.
Like to call to order the committee, the whole meeting for Pottstown Borough Council for February 7, 2024. Do you rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Chief Markovich, I think we have something good to do tonight. Tonight, we're going to appoint to the rank of corporal Stephen A. Dees. This appointee will therefore carefully and diligently discharge the duties of the grade to which appointed by doing and performing all manners of things thereto pertaining. And we do strictly charge and require all persons of lesser grade to render obedience to the appropriate orders. And this appointee is to observe and follow such orders and directions as may be given from time to time by superiors acting according to the rules and regulations governing the discipline of the police department, Pottstown Police Department. Given under our hand and seal of this corporation and headquarters, Pottstown Police Department, the 7th day of February 2024 in the year of our Lord, signed by our mayor, Stephanie Hendrick, and myself as Borough Council President, Dan Wean. Congratulations, sir. We have one more presentation at this time from our borough manager, Justin Keller.
Yes, so it looks like we're having another one leave the flock. Unfortunately Rodney wasn't able to make it here tonight. But I do want to congratulate him on his 33 years of dedicated service to the borough of Pottstown. He's been here since 1990. He's been in different capacities, including Public Works Maintenance, Electrician and Facilities Maintenance Technician, and then finally as the Electrical Instrumentation Technician in the Utilities Department. So we wish Rodney McMichael a happy and healthy retirement and good luck with all his future endeavors.
Very good. Okay, under the Subcommittee Reports Infrastructure, Counselor Lewdowski.
Senior Packard.
Got it. And Transportation, Counselor Proskel.
There's not a meeting.
All right, got it. Efficient Methods Committee, Counselor Lewdens.
We.
We did meet. We did meet.
Yeah, we did meet. We were basically looking to reevaluate and kind of go through some of the old departments to see what departments needed to be improved or re-improved. So we'll be coming up with a schedule on that. That's really about it. We have had updates with the ACH and the vendor supply setup, direct pay. Streamlining our info on the express bill pay and the billing info. We're going to, like I said, we're going to go back to probably LNI and start working with them again to see how, what else we can do to help them as well. We're looking at the IT service requests going live very, very soon. If not already, I know we're on beta right now, right, Justin?
Yes, so actually the service requests for LNI are now active online. So anybody that has a property concern, maintenance concern, they can feel free to reach out through our online system. So that's added in addition to the items that you can report for Public Works. About it.
Very good. The Ordnance Review Committee, I think you did meet.
Yes, we did. We actually discussed a variety of things, but probably more, most probably be the sign ordinances. We discussed licensing and regulation of skill games and then gets over living homes, which is very consideration this evening.
Very good. Emergency Services, Chief Hand.
Good evening, everyone. My report is also in the agenda, but tonight I'd like to introduce a couple of our emergency responders and then we have a guest that wants to speak to us. So first we have firefighter EMT Mark Gibson. And come on up, Mark, you're next to me. And then firefighter Taylor Smith, not Taylor Swift, Smith. So come on up. So and two other people couldn't be here tonight was EMT Civil Sheet and also paramedic Peter McAluso. Tonight we had a request from a resident that wanted to thank us for our services and come up and report during the Emergency Service Committee. Mr. Williams, would you like to come up?
God, easy. Most of you are used to seeing me in a different capacity for over 25 years since I retired from the AB. I've dedicated myself to supporting this community. I'm sorry. On November 27th, just before Thanksgiving, I thought I'd take it upon myself to jump up on top of my roof and clear out the leaves from my gutters. I have three levels of roofing. The third level is an extreme pitch. But my module is whatever it is. I decided, since I can't stand on that pitch, I would crawl and try to clean the roof off with my leaf blower. The next thing I remembered after doing that was my wife overlooking me at ICU in Tower Health, Reading. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I broke almost all the bones in my body. My skull fractured and my brain shifted a little bit. I spent five weeks in Tower Health, Reading. I don't want to say anything nice about Tower Health. But they have a lot of young people there who are trying really hard to keep the pace. If it wasn't for my wife, she heard the noise as I collapsed, as I fell from the roof to the sidewalk, face down. She immediately thought of calling emergency, EMT. And apparently within minutes, first person coming through that gate was Mark Gibson. My wife's words were, he looked at me and said, I know this man. I owe my life to my wife and to Mark because he took over immediately and told the crew what to do. The picture I saw of myself that my wife had the sense to take at that time were hoses sticking out of various parts of my body. The only thing missing was a fire hose. And I have our emergency our emergency personnel to thank for their quick handedness in taking care of me and getting me to the most appropriate place. And I'm back. And I'm back and I am working hard to, I could not walk for a number of weeks. And I've made a commitment to walk, to do the things that I do, but my wife says no ladders and no roofs. I encourage anybody thinking about jumping up on their roof to do the job that somebody professionally could do, no, don't do it. I'm in pain a lot. I'm taking a lot of medication, but I'm going to be back. We're going to have powwow on May 4th and 5th. We're going to go forward with my indigenous development. We're raising funds to take care of Pine Rich Indian Reservation. And I was going to wear my go forth t-shirt today because we are going to have an incredible Fourth of July. Been talking to the folks who do the parade, the Rotary Club. They're anxious to get it going here and the memorial, the Indian Memorial on Industrial Highway and Franklin Street. Folks from the Rotary Club are going to work with me to improve that, to create a sitting spot. But if it wasn't for these gentlemen, Mark, I know from way back when, and I've always appreciated him. He's been there whenever he's been needed, but this community only grows with our emergency response groups. I mean, I'm sorry that we don't have the old Pottstown Hospital because I think we had more resources there instead of having to drive me to Reading. But that's not for me to say. Thank you. Thank you, Pottstown.
So real quick in closing, you know, this was an effort by the fire department, the paramedics and the police to be there right away. And every month I give you guys reports that just have numbers, but this is what we deal with every day in the city. And I hope you guys can appreciate what us as emergency responders, fire and EMS do for the borough. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's been an emotional evening, Art.
From Human Relations, Ms. Levin, good. Welcome.
Good evening, Councilors and Council President. February is Black History Month.
Yes.
We honor the incredible contributions of the black community
that has been made throughout the United States history, from civil rights leaders to artists, politicians and inventors.
We celebrate black history from the past to the present. Remember your Valentine on February 14th. This year Valentine's Day is also Ash Wednesday. This is the beginning of the Lenten season. Lent is a time where certain Christian Catholics, Lutherans, Methodists, Presbyterians and Angelic denominations prepare for Easter through prayer, penance and fasting. And also President's Day is on Monday, February 19th. And the next Commission's meeting is, will be held on Tuesday, February 13th at 6:00 PM in council chambers and all are welcome to attend.
Thank you. I don't think we have Mindy from the library. Okay, Ricketts Community Senator, Counselor Kirkland. Anything to add?
Nothing today, but I'm going to have a report for Monday.
Okay. One day. And Pottstown School District, Counselor Lindsay.
I want to give a big kudos to our Trojan Girls Wrestling Team. Now, keep in mind, this is the first year that they are doing this and they are on fire. Let me tell you, they are making, they are making history. So kudos to the girls at the high school and the middle school wrestling team. You go, girls. And also I wanted to let you know that David Charles for Strive is looking for volunteers. He, I went to the leadership breakfast today, so I wanted to, you know, he expressed it mentors and how important it is for us to mentor youth. And if you have any, if you would like to be a mentor, you can contact David Charles. If you don't have David's information, you can always contact me and I can connect you to David. And my information is on the borough website, on the government. That's it for me.
Very good. Thank you. We will be foregoing the Solicitors General Discussion because he'll be joining us later. The Managers Report, Mr. Keller.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I have a couple of quick updates for you here tonight and then I want to tell you, it'll take a little bit longer to tell you about one program that we're looking to implement in the borough and also a information on some data about housing insecurity in the borough that I'll show in a little bit. But first, as I mentioned, the LNI service requests are now live, so please check into our website to report licensing and inspections issues to the borough. Also, good news on the grant front, the Commonwealth Financing Authority approved a grant through the Greenways Trails and Recreation Program for $75,000. And that's for Pollock Park Phase One Redevelopment Project. So we pretty much have the remediation money and that's going to hopefully get started soon. And then this will be for the redevelopment to put the facilities back into place that are on the master plan. Also, we did receive an additional $140,000 in stormwater arch rehabilitation funding from the CFA Flood Mitigation Program, and that's slated for the arch collapse at 1,200 High. So at this point, we should have all the funding available that we need to conduct that project. We're just waiting on the grant, final grant contract to come through so that we can initiate that work. So more on that to come soon. Next up, I want to respond to some of the reoccurring comments that we've had in the borough regarding some of the trash issues. And Counselor Lindsay and our new Assistant Manager, Zach Nelson, have been have been working together at Councilor Lindsay's request to create an Adopt a Street program in the Borough. So, we feel that it's really vital that, you know, businesses, government, residents, that we all play a vital role in keeping our neighborhoods safe, healthy and clean. We really need all the neighbors and community members to come together to make that difference. And we think that through this Adopt a Street program, it's one small step that we can take. It's fairly easy to implement. There's a lot of other things that we would like to do. But this is the first one that we would like to try to implement. So, how it would work is that we would ask individuals or groups to agree to a two-year contract where they would adopt a stretch of 1,500 feet of street, both sides of the street, probably about two or three blocks, depending on what street you're, you're on. The requirement would be to clean up at least twice a month to pick up trash and leaves along that street. And then also, in the wintertime, help out with clearing snow on the sidewalks for maybe neighbors that aren't able to do that and at the, at some of the ADA ramps and intersections. We're also encouraging that the groups get together twice a year for kind of a coordinated cleanup day where you could do like a four-block radius of your neighborhood. So, the Borough would supply vests, pickers, rakes and bags. The bags would be a distinct color so that we know where, where the active groups are and where to pick up the, the trash that they collect. The process will be that once they conduct a cleanup event, they are to contact Public Works Department so that we can coordinate through JP Mascaro to have the bags picked up. And if not, Public Works would be able to pick them up in their place. So, the way that, that's how we would keep track of it, so the residents reporting the bags to Public Works that need to be picked up. That's how we would measure whether the group is active or not. The groups would get a, a sign bearing their names. And it will be hung in the area that they choose to adopt, more likely one sign at the beginning of the, of the Adopt a Street area and one side at the end of the Adopt a Street area. And hopefully with this recognition, it would encourage others to join. So, this is kind of just a high-level summary. We still need to work out exactly what the two-year contract would look like with the, with the residents. But this, this program is modeled after a very successful program in the City of Reading. So, we've been coordinating with them. They actually have a whole department that is dedicated to Adopt a, Adopt a Street in the City of Reading. So, at this point, you know, unless anyone is opposed or has any suggestions, we would plan to move forward and implement this policy over the next couple of months. And I don't know if Trinita or Zach, if you wanted to add anything to this summary.
No, I just appreciate you guys implementing this idea that I happened to see. So, for those who don't know, I operate a bus for SEPTA and I drive around and I look at other areas. So, I'm in Bucks County, I'm in Lansdale, I drive all over. Okay, wherever SEPTA's at, that's where I'm at. And in Bucks County going towards Jersey, it's really a lot of traffic. And usually where there's a lot of traffic, people have a tendency to throw stuff out the window, right? See, this is awful clean to be this high-traffic area because you leave in Pennsylvania and you're going into Jersey. And on my way back, I seen a sign that said Adopt a Block and it had Mr. and Mrs. So-and-so. And I said, oh, when I get, because I can't use my phone on the bus, can't take pictures because I couldn't, and I'm going, I'm on, I'm time. So, I said, let me get to the end. So, I text Justin and said, what can we do at Talkabout? So, anytime I, you know, he said, oh, that sounds like a good idea. So, I'm, I'm doing research. And then when I, the more research I did, the more I realized that we weren't, that this wasn't a new thing. DC, my hometown is doing it, Reading, Lancaster, Philly, Philly got a big, they have a big hurrah going on about that. They in competition with blocks. I like to do competition. So, so anyway, and you know, this was last year. And now that we have a Borough Assistant Manager, he can, you know, me and him talked about it and stuff like that. And I just think this is a good idea, you know, to do it. And, and Zach is gonna talk to others, not just us. So, he gonna talk to people out here that, that is talking about the trash. So, we want to hear you because you got ideas just as well as I do. So, we want to hear your ideas also. So, I just thank you guys for, you know, implementing it and bringing it up. So, thanks.
And the other thing I didn't touch on is we want to be able to partner with Hobart's Run on this and require that the group also adopts one or two trash cans from Hobart's Run as a part of this effort. So, that would kind of bring it all, bring it all together very nicely with the cleanup. And then also having the trash receptacles available there as well to really help the community members take some ownership and pride in their neighborhoods.
Absolutely.
Rob, behind you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. Well, we will move, move forward and once we have.
Justin, can you do me a favor? Can you give me, or give the people, you know, the general update you gave me about the explosion area? I know it's not much that, that we have, but can you give them basically what you gave me? Just a general on the status. Because I've been getting calls about, you know, why isn't it cleared and what's going on? So, can you do that for me, please?
Yeah, I'd be happy to try to answer that for you. You know, as you know, with any tragedy like that, there can be a lot of litigation and lawsuits that result, coming from a lot of different directions. And through the course of that, there's a lot of attorneys that are involved with, with this particular issue. There's a lot of investigators, both, you know, with governmental entities and private through the attorneys that are looking into this matter and trying to understand and determine what the cause is and, you know, from the attorney's standpoint, who's at fault, right? So, because of all the parties that are involved, each, each step that they take, each time they need to remove something from the site or to get the site cleaned up or to conduct testing, all the attorneys have to meet, they have to agree, and they have to set a date. So, things in that regard are moving at a, at a snail's pace. But, you know, I want to assure everyone, things are still moving forward. And, you know, we're doing what we can to try to press them to get the site at least cleaned up because we think it's been more than due time for that to happen.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem. Yeah, so onto the Adopt a Street. We'll move forward with that. We'll be developing some more detailed guidance after Zach is able to get some more feedback from others. And we'll get back to you, so hopefully we'll have it implemented by spring. That's our, that's our goal. Next up, I wanted to present a couple of slides in response to some of the common themes that we've been getting from the public in terms of housing insecurity in, in the Borough. And, you know, what, what the Borough is doing, maybe how they compare to other municipalities, how they compare to Montgomery County. And kind of how did the socioeconomics of Pottstown end up where they are today? And I'm not here to try to offer solutions or cause a debate, but there's been a lot of kind of things said and facts that were thrown out here. Tonight, I just want to present to you some of the facts as we understand them. So, tonight we'll look at a comparative analysis with Montgomery County. Go to the next slide there. So, first up, I want to take a look at population versus housing vouchers. And in most of these slides, the blue color is going to represent the Borough and the orange color is going to represent the county. So, the pie graph on the left, we can see the population of Pottstown at 23,000 and the population of Montgomery County at 850,000. So, Pottstown represents 2.7% of the total population in the county. On the right, we have a graph showing the Housing Voucher Choice Residence. So, this was formerly known as Section Eight. And in Pottstown, we have 452 Section Eight vouchers out of Montgomery County's total, 2,507. So, even though we only have 2.7% of the county's population, we have almost 24% of the Housing Voucher Choice Residence. Next slide, please. Kind of hand-in-hand with that, next we want to look at low-income housing facilities. So, again, Borough ranks second. We're kind of leading the way here in the, in the number of these facilities that we have in the county. We have six of them. So, you can see there some of the other municipalities that are, that are listed, showing that we're number two. When we look at on the right, the number of low-income housing units, so these are the units within the low-income housing facilities. So, you know, Bright Hope, the Towers, so on and so forth. We have 9.7% of the low-income housing units of the county despite being 2.7% of the county's population. If you zoom out a little bit and add in the Rolling Hills Low Income Housing Development, that adds an additional 232 units. So, the general Pottstown area is saturated with 14.7% of the county's low-income housing. Next slide. So, why is this? Why do we bear disproportionate number of housing vouchers and public housing facilities? Couple reasons, really. But one of the main reasons for the housing vouchers is until recently, and this just changed several years ago, the county did not use market-based housing vouchers, meaning that non-market-based housing vouchers could disproportionately impact communities with lower property values such as Pottstown compared to the county average because they may attract a higher concentration of voucher holders seeking more affordable housing options. So, in the past, what has happened, for instance, if, if the county was giving you $1,000 for a two-bedroom apartment through the Housing Voucher Choice Program, you had the option to take that $1,000 and let's say you lived in Ambler. You could decide to find a facility in Ambler and you're probably gonna pay some additional monies above that $1,000 voucher that you would get. Or you could decide to come out to Pottstown and maybe even have the $1,000, you know, this, if it was five years ago, cover your full freight. And or maybe you would have less to pay in. So, it, what it did is it, it split families from their support structures because they were seeking where they could get, you know, the best available housing for their money. So, luckily that has changed, but the effects of that still impact Pottstown today because this is something that has gone on for generations and generations. And it causes several potential challenges for the community, and I won't read through all of these. But one is the concentration of poverty because these low-income individuals are coming to Pottstown because they can stretch that check further. It also diminishes access to opportunities. You know, with communities like Pottstown that have lower property values, we have to stretch our dollar a lot farther. We have fewer resources and amenities. And it impacts the quality of our schools, our healthcare facilities and, you know, very importantly, our, our job opportunities. So, obviously concentrating voucher holders in a particular community can have these kind of effects. And it also, it also adds to perpetuating the negative stereotype and stigma with voucher holders in, in terms of poverty, you know, and housing assistance programs and whatever, you know, people's views on what the, you know, benefit versus, you know, the pros and cons are versus the different programs. So, the good news is, is that, you know, we are in a market-based housing voucher, meaning that if you're, if you're in Lower Marion, you're gonna get a substantially higher voucher amount than you would get in Pottstown. So, that should allow people to hopefully, you know, stay in place with their support structure. You know, one of the issues that it, that it causes for us is, and for the school district and the issues that they have with transancy. You know, there are teachers that I've heard of who started their classroom with 30 students and they'd be lucky if they had five of those original 30 students at the end of the year. So, this is very hard for any continuity in the education of, of, of the students. So, the good news is, is that that's been, that's been kind of right-sized, but we still bear the legacy of what had happened to us for decades. Next slide, please. So, next I want to talk a little bit about unhoused and shelter beds available in the Borough. And countywide, I know that there's a lot of opinions about, you know, should, should the Borough do more? Are we, you know, why aren't they doing more? Are they doing enough? Maybe they're doing too much. Wherever you stand on that, I don't want to get into that tonight, but I want to look at the data that we do have available through the county. And, and a lot of this data, I'll just highlight that it's based on the 2023 point in time count. I think that the 2024 count probably just happened, or if not, it's probably gonna happen soon. So, we don't have that, that data quite yet. But as of last year, the total unhoused individuals living outside. So, this is just the, this isn't the total number of unhoused individuals. I think that number is north of 300 in, in the county, but some of them have shelter. So, this is just looking at on the right here, the total that we have that are not in shelter. So, as you can see in Pottstown, we have 41 unhoused that are not in shelter. The county has 110 overall. So, we have 32% of the county's unhoused population. So, no matter which way you cut it currently, there's, there's a deficit of beds. I mean, that's, that's a fact. Total year-round and seasonal beds. So, year-round would be something that obviously people could take refuge in. Year-round seasonal would be things like Code Blue or warming centers like we have here in Pottstown. So, right now, on Pottstown and then on the second pie graph there, we have 22% of the existing year-round and seasonal beds in the county. So, that's the total combined of those, those two different, those two different numbers. If you look at the last chart on the right, there's, Pottstown has also approved, and, you know, people seem to forget this, but Pottstown Zoning Hearing Board did approve a 45-bed permanent shelter in Pottstown for year-round housing. So, mostly what you're seeing there under the existing number is going to be the, you know, the 30 beds temporary warming shelter plus the beds that we have at the Salvation Army. On the right there, the gray area would represent, once the 45-bed shelter is constructed, which again, has been approved, we would represent 33% of the total year-round and seasonal beds in the county. And we have a 32, 37.2% population currently that's unhoused. Next slide, please. So, we're gonna break this down a little bit further. And we've talked about year-round and, and temporary beds. In the year, in the year-round bed category. In the year-round bed category, we have two categories. So we have single beds that could be open to single individuals. And then we also have family beds that are open to families. This number, the family number, is a little bit harder to count because they count them as units. Some families could have two or three in a unit, but other families could have four or five. But the number that the county has used for this has been at 2.7 per unit. So in Pottstown, single beds, countywide, I should say countywide, the single adult beds that we have is 51 right now, 51. That's it, year-round. That's all we have. With the addition of the 45 beds that were approved here in Pottstown, Pottstown would have 46, almost half of the seasonal, or half of the year-round beds, single beds in the county, once that's constructed, compared to what we have now. And then we look at year-round family beds. So this is the Salvation Army. They've been in operation for a pretty long time now. They've got 11 units there or about 29 beds. So in terms of year-round family beds, we've got 32% of the year-round beds in the county. And then we look at temporary beds, Code Blue, seasonal. So this is the, you know, something similar to what the warming center is. It's operated by Beacon of Hope. So in Pottstown, we have 30 beds. But countywide, we have 125. So Pottstown has 24% of the beds in the county through the 30-bed seasonal warming center that was also approved by the borough. Now, we'd like to look at it, breaking it down by municipality. And quite frankly, there aren't a lot of municipalities that have done anything to help out with shelters in Pottstown. And you'll see that there are six total locations. And this is combining the year-round beds, the single and the family year-round beds. Currently, we have more year-round beds than 60 of the 62 municipalities in Montgomery County. And with the approval of the 45 beds, once that's constructed, we'll have more year-round beds than any other municipality in Montgomery County. So that's what's represented by that gray bar above Pottstown. That would be the future construction. Looking on the right at temporary beds, the Code Blue seasonal breakdown by municipality, you can see that Norristown has about 45 beds. And then Pottstown is right behind that with about 30 beds. So again, on this chart, Pottstown has done more than any other municipality outside of Norristown to accommodate temporary beds. Next slide, please. So whose responsibility is this? Well, it's complicated. But what we do know is that the county has a total budget of $567 million. 38.6% of that is allocated for health and human services, under which programs for homelessness, affordable housing, things of that nature would be provided for. So the blurb on the right is basically, it lists the various entitlement, grant funds, CDBG, home, emergency solution grants, and kind of what they're targeted to. The ESG is funding to engage homeless individuals on the street. So that's probably something like what Street Outreach does, just to kind of give you an idea of the nature of that type of service that they're funding there. And improve the number of shelters, the quality of shelters, assisted shelter operations, rapidly rehouse the individuals, provide services and prevention. Home project is meant to building, buy and rehab affordable housing for rent or homeownership. And essentially, most of this funding is passed down through the federal or the state government to the county, not to the borough, to the county. At that point, the county then determines which projects they want to move forward with. And typically, that's done through an RFP process. And through the RFP process, these funding funds could be awarded to municipalities or in many cases, nonprofits that are running these type of facilities. But there's no requirement on how the county kind of allocates this. I mean, there are requirements in terms of what type of uses it can be allocated towards, but when it gets down to the detail of which projects are picked, the county is pretty much in charge of that decision. Just the main category is the money has to be spent towards low and moderate income individuals. Next slide, please. Another kind of one-time funding source that the county had was the American Rescue Plan Act. And through the American Rescue Plan Act, the county received 161 million through ARPA. And they allocated 20% towards affordable housing. Pottstown received 1.8 million for affordable housing. And we're not aware if any of those projects have come to fruition. When we talk about shelter funding, the county's approach to shelter funding has been to not directly get involved in building or managing a shelter themselves. They're kind of preferring to pass that on to the nonprofit world or faith-based institutions to run these facilities for them, essentially. So shelter funding was 4.2% of the 161 million. In Pottstown, Beacon of Hope received 1.2 million or 17% of the county's total shelter funding. Next slide. Now, since the ARP money was given out, the county formed a homeless task force. And there were three top areas for project endorsement. And this kind of was arrived at through rankings, you know, depending on low barriers, financial costs, high impact, you know, chance of success. So the overall focus was clearly on strategic placement of shelters, especially in areas outside of Norristown and Pottstown. Engaging faith-based partners to increase the number of faith-based organizations that can provide shelters. And then localizing the homeless response, strategically placing shelter and local services for the unhoused, especially outside of Norristown and Pottstown. So clearly, the funding was provided to Beacon of Hope. We've got, you know, we're doing better than, you know, 50 or 60 of the other municipalities in Norristown. So the task force picked up on that and they said, wait a minute, Pottstown and Norristown are doing all the heavy lifting here. So that's where these recommendations kind of came from. Then thirdly, addressing zoning, especially the ease shelter establishment for faith-based organizations. Obviously, we went through our share of trials and tribulations with the zoning. But at the end of the day, both the permanent and the temporary were approved. But you know, let's be honest, it wasn't easy, but we did get there. We did get there. Next slide, please. So how does this impact the borough? Well, first, we look at the real estate property tax. And we look at all the, I think, over 6,000 or so, or no, I'm sorry, 8,000 or so tax-exempt, non-tax exempt parcels in the borough. And then we looked at the tax exempt. So we've got 333 tax exempt, 8,429 non-exempt. So about 4% of our parcels are tax exempt. But when you look at the slide on the right, we're losing 2.4 million every year from properties that are not on the tax roll. So how does that add up with these? We only have, you know, 4% of parcels that are tax exempt, but we're losing 23% of our revenue. It's because a lot of these parcels are large facilities, like Tower Health, like the Hill School, like, you know, schools, like the borough, right? So we're all kind of, we're all kind of in this together. You know, some of these are the social service entities that are helping those in need. Those in need, those entities tend to bring in individuals that in general have a higher need for local government and police services, but the entities don't pay taxes to offset these services. So the tax-exempt parcels, they've been increasing in Pottstown since 2011. They've increased almost 9%. If you look at the tax millage, the red line represents where Pottstown is. There's a red arrow below Pottstown. These are the other municipalities in Montgomery County. So in terms of municipal tax millage, we're at number two highest. In terms of the combined school and municipal millage, we're at third highest. So what is, putting all this together, what is it saying? It's saying that we've got low property values. We've got residents with high needs that we need to spend more money on to assist. And we've got a high proportion of tax-exempt parcels, which make it financially more difficult to be able to assist and implement the types of programs that we would like to implement in the borough. Next slide, please. So this all kind of gets back to property values. And this slide looks at the median household data. So median household income in Pottstown is 52,000. It's about half of what it is in Montgomery County. Similarly, the property value of 215,000 is about half of what it is in Montgomery County. Homeownership's just under 50% in the county. It's at 72%. So just to kind of summarize, Pottstown faces numerous conditions. We have, you know, contentious issues that come up that seem to be reoccurring themes, things like recovery homes, subsidized housing, housing voucher choice, tax-exempt properties, homeless shelters. And, you know, we have organizations that are intending to establish and expand these facilities. So they are looking at Pottstown as the most cost-effective location to operate. And in addition, with Pottstown's historical concentration of poverty, it's become a prime destination for these entities to locate here. Really, the attractiveness serves from the generational poverty concentration, which makes it appealing for these entities to locate here to try to serve these populations. So additionally, you know, the entities can reduce their upfront costs due to lower property values, which, as we went over earlier, partially had to do with some misguided, you know, federal, state, and county government policies and programs, which only amplified the trend over time. So clearly, Pottstown is shouldering a disproportionate burden of social service responsibilities when compared to the county, despite the loss of tax revenue that it creates. But we're doing a lot to support those in need. You know, as a home to numerous organizations in the borough that help the homeless assist with affordable housing, assist those struggling with mental and health issues and those in need of food and other assistance. And I think what the data does point to very clearly is that other communities in the region are not contributing their fair share, which has put an undue strain on the borough's taxpayers and resource. So that concludes my presentation. If anyone would like a copy, I'd be happy to send that out.
Remember, when I first got on council, I guess that would be nine years ago. I had a lot of questions about specifically the housing vouchers and what they used to refer to as Section 8. And actually, Joel Johnson, the Secretary Director of Montgomery County Housing, actually came out and met me and he actually spent about an hour with me to explain, you know, all the details of what goes into it. And actually, there's a fair amount of misconceptions about it. I wonder if it'd be beneficial if you'd have time to talk to us at some point in time this year, if anybody's interested. I think he spoke and planned a property review that year as well. Maybe you have time.
You're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Okay, remember 12 potential zoning ordinance amendments. Mr. Hoey.
Okay. And two things to present to you this evening. One's quicker and the other's a little bit lengthier. At your table tonight were four documents. The Ordinance Review Committee recommended two separate amendments to the zoning ordinance. The first of which has to do with general criteria for special exceptions. A few years ago, we adopted general conditions for conditional uses. I referenced those during the conditional use hearing tonight. And the document that says Pottstown code on the top, those are those conditions that you adopted for conditional uses. And as you can see, they're just general things that the applicants got approved to show that it's compatible with the neighborhood and won't have a negative impact. When we reviewed the ordinance, we discovered that there are no general criteria for special exceptions. As a refresher, conditional uses come to you for a hearing and decision. Special exceptions go to the zoning hearing board. So the Ordinance Review Committee is just recommending that you adopt conditions for special exception, which are consistent with the conditionally used criteria. So that will be listed for Monday night along with the potential amendment for sober living homes. The second topic is the one that's a little bit more interesting. It's a controversial topic and problematic for a lot of municipalities, you know, throughout the Commonwealth. This job is interesting too, because you never really know what you're going to gain expertise in. And even before I knew municipal law existed, one of my first clients, two firms ago, was a group home out in the Lancaster area. And I helped them through the zoning process. And since, over the years, have represented a couple other group homes in working them through that process and ensuring that, you know, their rights were honored. And obviously, the primary work nowadays is working for municipalities who are on the other side, trying to manage this particular use, which often is very unpopular with the neighborhood that they're located in. And there's a lot of fear and mystery surrounding this particular use. So I'm going to walk you through sort of what group homes are, sober living homes, current state of our ordinance, and what's being recommended by the Ordinance Review Committee at this point. I kind of did it in a fake question and answer format to try to hopefully make it a little more user-friendly. But group homes are protected by the Federal Fair Housing Act. And what is a group home? Group home is a place where people with protected disabilities live in a supportive family environment. What's considered a family environment? It is stable housing where people live for an extended period of time, not day-to-day or month-to-month. Where the courts have yet to give a clear test on when someone is considered transient rather than someone with stable housing, the case law generally suggests that someone's required to stay at a home for at least a couple months before moving on to somewhere else. The courts have also told us that there needs to be shared common areas, such as a kitchen, living room, and bathrooms, which are maintained by the people who live there. It does not involve any type of specialized services being offered within the home, such as counseling. When is someone qualified as disabled and protected in terms of living in a group home? You qualify as disabled under the American with Disabilities Act if you're a person who has a physical or mental impairment that substantially limits one or more major life activity, a person who has a history or record of such an impairment, or a person who is perceived by others as having such an impairment. Examples in terms of a group home setting would be a home for the deaf, a home for individuals with autism, or a home for other people with physical, intellectual, or developmental disabilities. It also includes individuals who are in active recovery from drug and alcohol addiction. It also includes individuals who are in active recovery from drug and alcohol addiction. But it's important to understand that if someone is abusing drugs or alcohol, then they are no longer qualified as disabled. What protections do group homes enjoy? They may not be discriminated against in terms of their housing options. The courts direct that group homes essentially cannot be treated differently than traditional nuclear families in terms of housing laws and how housing laws are enforced. This means that our zoning, rental requirements and building and property maintenance codes cannot treat group homes any differently than they do you and your families. What's a sober living home or recovery house? What's good about it and why are they important and what's problematic? A sober living home or recovery house is a type of group home for individuals who are in active recovery from drug and/or alcohol addiction. The theory behind it, we've met, we even had a good presentation with ordinance review committee from one of the operators here in town. When someone is dealing with addiction, usually in their life, they have people who are enabling that addiction. And sort of what the research shows is that when someone goes to rehab, they come out of rehab and they go back to the same environment they were in, surrounded by those same individuals, the likelihood of relapse is particularly high. What a sober living home does is when the person comes out of a rehab facility where they're receiving actual treatment or counseling, they would move into a home with other individuals in that same situation and try to develop their coping skills, stability in an environment that's conducive to that. The other thing that's interesting about it is what's usually recommended is someone's coming out of a treatment center, they actually locate to a sober living home that's not where they're from. Because again, you're trying to get away from the people who are enabling that type of, of, you know. It can be really important. Most group homes will require the people who live there to follow house rules, to do chores. There's congregate meals. They're required to seek employment. And the typical stay is somewhere from about six to nine months in a successful case. What's problematic about them is often how they're run. They can be quite lucrative and there are a lot of sober living homes that are motivated more by money than some type of mission. And in those types of homes, the individuals are not nurtured or cared for. They're basically a paycheck. And what ends up happening is those individuals will relapse. And often those sober living homes, rather than following any type of proper eviction procedure, will just throw these individuals out on the street. And at this point, if they have relocated somewhere away from home, they're now essentially in a foreign new place and, and homeless. And their families may not have been contacted. Services may not have been contacted to provide any type of assistance. And that can become really problematic for the neighborhood and the community in which these homes are located. What is our current zoning for group homes? Group homes under our current ordinance are permitted by special exception in the traditional town, neighborhood, district, but nowhere else, including the neighborhood residential district. The special exception criteria regulate the number of people who can reside in the home, how many people can sleep in a bedroom, and require screening and setback requirements for parking areas, as some examples. Why is this unenforceable? These regulations treat group homes differently than families. For example, families are permitted to reside in a single family home in the neighborhood residential district, but group homes are not. The only limitation on how many people who live in a single family dwelling or sleep in a single bedroom for people other than those living in group homes are those contained in the building code. This is a problem because if a home is large enough per the building code to allow for a couple, their eight children and their in-laws to all reside there, for example, then group homes under the law should be permitted to operate at that same capacity. Approximately four years ago, after the zoning hearing board denied an application filed by a group home for recovery addicts for zoning relief, the borough got sued based on the illegality of the ordinance. On the advice of our assurance company, that litigation settled. And at the time, we directed that the ordinance no longer be enforced against group homes because of these legal issues and the likelihood of further litigation, unless and until it could be modified and brought into compliance with the Federal Fair Housing Act's protections or something changed. So what changed that we're coming forward with this proposal now? Pennsylvania's Department of Drug and Alcohol Programs created a licensing program for sober living homes. The licensing program is intensive and establishes best practices. The regulations govern everything from intake and screening, personnel management, safety and emergency procedures, tenants' rights, medication control and administration, and complaints about the operation of the home. Information on licensed sober living homes is publicly available and can be accessed and searched on DDAP's website. Complaints about licensed sober living homes can also be made directly to DDAP, which will investigate the complaints, not the local municipality. Failing to meet the program's standards will result in the loss of the license. The problem, though, is that the licensing program is voluntary. It's voluntary for the reasons I previously explained, namely that group homes are federally protected and even the, the state cannot directly regulate them absent some change in the federal law. The Commonwealth tried to create incentive for sober living homes to obtain a license based on an attempt to limit the revenue for the homes. Sober living homes can be quite lucrative in a way that is different from a single family residence. A property here in town might be rentable for $1,200 a month. If a sober living home houses eight men, however, and charges each of them $300 per month to stay there, then the operator can get $1,800 a month for a single family residence, which otherwise would be rented for a lot less money. The state now mandates that any treatment center which receives funding from Pennsylvania is prohibited from referring patients to non-licensed sober living homes. It is an effort to try to cut off easy referrals and make it more difficult for these homes to maintain their occupancy if they are unlicensed. I know some homes did get licensed after the program, the program rollout, but many still resist. These homes usually get the residents through church networks and other patient referrals. And the packet I gave you included a list of the DDAP website of all sober living homes in Montgomery County that are licensed. You will see that most of them are here in the borough. Ultimately, we believe that the licensing program, though, may provide an opportunity to craft an enforceable zoning amendment, which addresses at least some of the concerns that surround this use without denying protected persons appropriate housing. So what's in the proposed ordinance amendment? The proposed ordinance amendment includes revisions to the definition for group homes that make several adjustments for all group homes and not just sober living homes. These include defaulting to the maximum occupancy limits in the building code and require that they register with LNI. It will now allow which are unlicensed, to be permitted by right in any dwelling unit throughout the borough. The proposed amendment also creates a definition for sober living home, which will be a subset of group home. The definition provides as follow. A sober living home will be a type of group home used for four or more individuals recovering from drug or alcohol addiction and not engaged in the current illegal use of or there may be a typo. But essentially engage in, in current use of controlled substances and which provides those individuals with a safe and supportive drug and alcohol free environment that may include peer support and other non-specialized recovery support services for the purposes of a transitional environment between rehabilitation facilities and reintegration into their future lives. This definition shall not include uses. This definition includes uses of often termed sober houses, recovery houses, or sober living environments. It then creates subdefinitions for licensed and unlicensed sober living homes with a license through DDAP being the difference. Licensed sober living homes will be required to keep their application and license on file with LNI. And this includes a tremendous amount of information on each one, which would essentially be available to the public in certain circumstances. Unlicensed sober living homes will be permitted by special exception. On page two of the outline, you'll see that the proposed amendment then includes special exception criteria for that use. We believe the conditions of approval to be reasonable and attainable. They're meant to protect the residents and ensure a baseline of operation. Additionally, any group home that is not owner occupied, which in many cases is most of them because they'll be owned and operated by an LLC or a corporation or some other entity, they will be subject to our rental program, which will require rental license, inspections and tenant reporting, just as any other single family dwellings require to do. Ultimately, is this defensible of challenged? The crux of a legal challenge would be that the borough is discriminating against people with disabilities in terms of housing and specifically recovering addicts. Our position will be that by permitting all group homes except for unlicensed sober living homes, the intent and effect of the ordinance amendment is clearly not discriminatory against or exclusionary of recovering addicts. The intent and effect is the opposite as the special exception criteria seeks to protect those individuals' rights and protect the health and safety of not just those people, but those in the neighborhood where they are located. If council is seeking to be able to attempt to regulate this use to some extent, a lot of thought and research went into the outline presented to you this evening. And it is the best we can develop so far in our effort to try to thread the needle. Ultimately, though, it will come down, though, to your level of risk tolerance. Proceeding with this ordinance amendment, the enforcement thereof will not be without risk. The borough may get challenged if it chooses to require the unlicensed homes to get special exception criteria, or if the zoning hearing board denies an application for special exception approval. But again, this is our, our best effort to try to give you some option to do something. So I know that's a lot of information for tonight. Ideally, I think it should just sort of be a question and answer format. You can then have a few days to digest all of this and we can list it for discussion on, on Monday evening. So any questions?
So I guess while you absorb it, I, I think what we're, what Matt's asking for is for, you know, if you're comfortable with the concept that you would authorize him to move forward with preparing an ordinance for your review in the future, near future.
How many times have we been sued for trying to enforce this ordinance? The way it was, without these changes?
I believe only once.
Only once?
I think that ordinance was only in effect for a couple of years.
Correct. It was, it was adopted in 2015.
And I think 2019 we got sued.
Okay, we'll list it for Monday.
I have one more question.
Sure.
Is it worth the effort of going through this, the change, compared to the odds of us getting sued if it's enforced? Do you know what I'm trying to ask? Basically, is it worth it? Well, I understand the work's done already, but is it worth continuing with it and putting it through if we're just going to have the same issue? Hell, I mean, I know you can't be certain, but what's the level of risk?
Sure. I mean, whether it's worth it is a policy decision for council. You know, you're the ones who feel complaints from, from neighbors. You know, you have a sense of the pulse as to whether or not this is an issue that needs to be addressed at this time. In terms of the level of risk, we've minimized it as, as much as we can. I genuinely believe in what's been presented and would be comfortable defending this in court. You know, it would ultimately be up to a judge to determine, you know, again, where the risk comes from is by still doing it by special exception for the unlicensed sober living homes is they can make the argument that you're still treating us differently than families. You know, our counters, well, we still have some degree of responsibility to the neighborhoods and particularly the individuals who live there because this ordinance is focused at the operators of the sober living home to make sure there's at least some minimum standards that are protecting the people who live there. So there's, there's still some risk because as far as how they're being treated. But, you know, we think we've minimized it as best we can.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I took a deep review of it and I think so too. I mean, the, the ordinance that we have on the books now is clearly challengeable. You know, I would say, and this one is, might be challengeable. So I, but, but still, I think closer to, to not. But even if somebody can challenge every, anything, whether they win or not, it's, it's a different story. But the other part of this is that in order for us to receive funding through the, the federal government and the state, we have to have ordinances that are in compliance with the Fair Housing Act. So since we've been challenged and, and lost, technically, if we keep this current ordinance on the book, we could be denied grant funds in the future if we don't take steps to correct it. And, and you're, so, and so then if you don't do anything, your only other opportunity is, well, we have an ordinance on the book, but we're not going to enforce it.
That's really good information. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so Alexa, we'll list that for Monday. Next is a zoning appeal by the grocery outlet bargain market signage.
Yeah, this is a zoning appeal related to 799 State Street, which is in the Highway Business District. They're looking to put a grocery store in there. They're requesting three sign variances. Three signs total are permitted. They're seeking to have four. And then the other two variances are related to the maximum total sign area and then the size of one of the directional signs that they're proposing. A copy of the sign pack, the, the sign plan was attached to the agenda and in your packet so you can see exactly what those look like. You know, we'll list this for, for Monday evening for you to determine whether or not you want to take a position.
That's your award done?
Yeah.
Okay.
No question. Would issues like this particular sign be addressed when the ordinance gets addressed for signage?
Some of it would be if we follow through with the formula. For the benefit of everyone, we're working through a comprehensive amendment to the sign ordinance. The, the working theory is to try to get to a model, particularly for businesses, where they would be entitled to a maximum sign area and they could use that sign area however they want. So it would be a step away from saying you can only have, in this case, three signs. It would rather say you could have 500 square feet and they could then have three, four, two, five, however many signs they want. So at least one of the variances likely would not be needed under the, the working theory for the rewrite.
Thank you.
Matt, I'm looking at the, the sign ordinance. It's probably maybe something that we might want to look at because the square footage of the signage that's allowed and what large retailers, let's say like Panera or Chipotle, are frequently, because of their branding, are frequently, that's, so they're going to have to be constantly coming up for. Unless, of course, we get away from maybe square footage and maybe look at light pollution because I think light pollution could be something that you could look at. But I just see these signs and I say, these guys who want seven times what the size wants. Or what this, that's because they have done this in various locations. So the sign issue may, if not addressed, may deter larger entities from wanting to construct stuff. Unless we're always just going to go, go right ahead.
Yeah, and I, I think that I've been involved in the ordinance review meetings and I think that's exactly what we're trying to do. So we're, we're trying to tie the square footage of the sign that's allowed to the frontage of the building. So if you've got a bigger frontage, you can do a bigger sign. You know, as long as it's still not a certain percentage more, whatever percentage we pick, 10%, 15%, whatever that is. But yeah, we're trying to tie it to which, you know, so that it's proportional.
That's something we actually agree on. I've been asking for changes to the sign ordinance since they made some businesses take down their whole signs. So, yeah, look at that. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, 14, we have a zoning hearing board application. That's yours?
That's Matt.
Matt?
14's the donation. Did I have the wrong copy? Sure. The other zoning application? Yeah, the other zoning application that was received is for 415 High Street. The applicant presently on the property is one commercial building, which was the bank. The new owners are seeking to convert the bank into a mixed-use building with a 4,800-square-foot laundromat on the ground floor and two residential units on the second floor. This property is located in the downtown. The zoning officer denied the application, and the applicant is seeking two variances, two use variances. The first use variance is because laundromats are not permitted within the downtown district. And then the second is that laundromats then are not permitted as part of a mixed-use building. So there are two use variances to essentially have a laundromat on the first floor of that building.
And isn't there a laundromat within football-throwing distance?
Washington.
On the 400 block? So I was driving by, and I'm sure I could hit the bank with a football. So they're gonna put a laundromat right within a football throw of another laundromat?
Okay.
Just, that's
What they want.
That's interesting.
So we'll list this for Monday night, and you can decide whether or not you want to take a position.
Yeah, it's interesting. I mean, I didn't realize what you just said, but I talked to some other places, and Oxford has one in their downtown. And I was really surprised at that. I'm sure they don't have one within a football throw of another one. However, yeah, I was, I found that pretty interesting. That's all.
Okay, Pottstown Center LP, they want a donation bin?
Yeah, so it looks like Matt was gonna take this one, but they're requesting to place two of the donation item recycling bins in the parking lot. Per our code, only one bin is allowed per property. So they're seeking a waiver of section Part 10, 1007.
That good as me?
No, that's you guys.
Just for us?
Yeah, it's similar to when you waive other ordinance requirements. So they're coming to you to seek a waiver. As Justin said, the ordinance only allows one donation bin per property. And they're seeking, you know, special permission from you to have a second one.
What's the address on this? Remember?
223 Shoemaker.
It's the Walmart Center, right?
Okay.
Are they generally kept up? Meaning, they're the clothes donations, right? Like, are the clothes generally in the bins, not left outside? Just sort of?
It depends on the operator. I mean, I've certainly seen some that have been in good condition and others where things get piled up. And I think that we have one per property for a good reason.
Okay. That's, okay. Thank you.
Okay, list that. 16 is Take It Outdoors Sign Memorandum. What's our, do I?
Yeah, so if you recall, this is the very successful kayak bike rental program that we partnered with, with the nonprofit Take It Outdoors. So we have an initial MOU, and as a part of that MOU, we're obligated to conduct an annual review and update the agreement. Michael Lenhart, Parks and Recreation Director, has reviewed the agreement, and he has nothing but good things to say and would like to review it for another year.
Ergen, any questions?
No, I love running kayaks from there. Me too.
List that for Monday. 17, a resolution, Monco PA 240. Do you have an application due?
Yes, we do. This is due in March, so we would like to submit an application for $250,000 for Monco 2040. This will be a project aimed at repairing sidewalks that are damaged by street trees in the core downtown area. This will be a repair program that will be regardless of property ownership. So whether it's owner occupied or not. It aligns with many of the criteria in the grant program. The grant program calls for adaptation resiliency as well as support for downtowns, and they want a contiguous project. So we think we hit a lot of the, check a lot of the boxes here for this one. But I just, I want to note that this program is, will be separate from the upcoming $100,000 that council approved for sidewalks damaged by street trees in other areas of the borough, which is slated to go to low to moderate owner occupied properties, and that's slated to launch later this year. So the match for the $250,000 project in the downtown would be $25,000.
Okay. Questions? All right, you listed. I'll sign it.
I'll do.
Okay, 18 is a resolution for destruction of records.
Yeah, so every year we have the records that will be instructed. We have a list for everyone's review if you want to take a look at it. And we're allowed to destroy these in accordance with the Municipal Records Act.
Okay, do that on Monday. Act 44 Transit, our performance review.
Yes, if you guys recall, you approved this initial plan a couple of months ago. This gets reviewed quarterly. And if you look at the attachment, it's basically, it's putting in target dates for implementation of the various action plan items that we've approved.
Okay, do that. Sly Fox 5K, street closure, same as last year.
Yep, begin at 10:00 AM and be on Circle of Progress. Circle of Progress, Lasco Rice, West Chestnut, Prince Street.
And Go Fourth, the Beer Garden, Smith Family Plaza and Memorial Park for July 4th?
Yep, that's correct, so.
Another repeat?
That is another repeat, yep. And the Beer Garden will be 11:30 to 4:00 in that area, and then 5:00 to 9:00 in Memorial Park.
Okay, we'll approve that Monday. And then Go Fourth Festival, street closure for July 4th, same thing.
Yep, correct, same closure from 11:00 AM to 5:00.
Justin, with the, when I think of Go Fourth and the Fourth of July parade, that's Pottstown at its absolute best. It's the best day of the year. And several years ago, there was no, there was no festival because of money, okay? And what I'm hoping that we do for festivals to bring uncounted thousands of people into this town, that we try to make it as easy for them as possible by reducing the fees to Go Fourth so that they don't have to raise that extra money. And they can put it, if they had it, towards more good things for the town. And that goes as well for the, let's say, the Lowe's Car Show as well because there's a lot of people that come into town, and that requires a lot of logistics. And I understand it's a pain. But the alternative is that they don't have them. Whether it's Go Fourth, which we saw, if it wasn't for two people, there would be no Go Fourth. There would be no pride full day in Pottstown where we sit around and we say, isn't this a great town? And everybody who's there agrees that this is a great town to go to. So if anything that we can do to lessen the financial burden on these places who are not making any money off this and who are welcoming the town, if we can encourage that, that would be awesome. Pottstown Patriotic 5K, rolling street closure.
Yes, so this will be Beach Adams, beginning at the Rickett Center at 8:00 AM, and then kind of roll through as, and head to the east on Beach Price, and then circle back on High York, and then up Chestnut Street.
Okay. Questions? No, we'll add that. Harb for 21 North Hannover, it's in the attachment, and administratively approved. And a dozen places there. Upcoming board, the EAC, there's one three-year term to expire August 10th, 2024. Land Bank, a three-year term to expire April 9th, 2026. And Mr. Dur asked to be reappointed?
No.
No?
It's his wife.
Hattie.
Oh.
Yep.
Okay.
Hattie Dur, okay.
It'd be a new appointment if you would.
All right. That's okay. And for the Planning Commission, a four-year term to expire February 1st, and Mr. Hilton asked for reappointment. Be good. And now, we'd like to hear from our citizens, see what comments they have.
Thank you. All right, we'll skip Ron. First up, we have Jennifer Suskey, 773 Beach Street, Pottstown.
Yeah, it's super awkward. Come up. It's okay.
I just moved here two years ago, and I'm very interested in helping with the cleanup, the trash cleanup. That's my biggest concern, so I'll be reaching out to you. Can everybody hear me? No? Okay. So I moved here two years ago. I'm really, I don't like the trash. You know, it's just, it's pretty bad. I walk my dog just about every day, and I pick up trash as I walk my dog. And the next day, there's trash again, you know? And I just have a question, and I'm sorry if I don't, you know, I obviously don't know this, that's why I'm here. Is, can you maybe like find the people that rent these homes out that continue to litter all the time? I know if it's like on the street, they really can't get fined. But if it's like in their yard, like for instance on B Street, there's like a factory, there's a church, there's an old factory, like they painted the wall. I don't know what it is, an art infusion or something. But then there's like this little corner store there, and it's just like trash everywhere. And it's just such a sad sight to see. You know, it's like you own that business, take some pride, and just clean up like the Wawa. You know, you go into the Wawa, and there's cigarette butts and just trash every day. It's just, it's sickening to me. And I live next door to, they rent out, I believe they do foster care. So I was really zoning in when he was talking about sober homes. But I'm wondering if like the foster care has the same type of rules that they have to apply by. It's just a bad situation. I had to call the police several times over the last two years because there's a lot of domestic violence that goes on there. So now there's repercussions with them not liking me. I own the home that I live in, and it's just trash every single day in front of their house, abandoned cars. I called and had the car finally removed. And then yesterday, no, two days ago, I was walking my dog, picking up my trash, and there is a little girl yelling out her window, calling me names. And I'm just like, okay, I just didn't say anything. And I'm in my 50s, you know. Years ago, you'd walk right up to the door and say, your daughter said this. I'm afraid that there's gonna be, you know, problems by me saying so. I just thought, I'm just gonna go to the council meeting and ask you guys, you know, what my rights are as far as that goes because that's just gonna get increasingly worse because they drink, there's domestic violence, there's fighting. And then just the trash is my biggest thing. So I'd like to help out, clean up. I do it all the time. But I feel as though if it's in front of like a business or even in front of somebody's house that they rent, that's the least they can do is at least pick up the trash. You're renting, you're getting subsidized money. You know, just have some respect and clean up. So I don't know what you guys can think about that or.
Sure. Yeah, we'll have someone get back to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Marlene Armato.
I like your shirt. I wore it for a purpose. I know. Good evening, Marlene Armato for Park Court. I came tonight seeking clarification on the vote taken by council limiting who's allowed to speak during public comment. So I appreciate on the front of the agenda where it explains taxpayer, resident or taxpayer. I guess the clarification we're seeking is around the taxpayer part. What tax is that based on? Is it per capita? Is it real estate? Is it occupied, like, what is it? If it's real estate, does that mean then that someone who owns a business but rents the space is not allowed to speak? And so we're trying to seek clarification on that. It seems like it also means our clergy can't speak. It means our nonprofits can't speak. It means our school superintendent can't speak. It means that our state representative can't speak. So again, we're seeking clarification on what the tax is that it's based on and who's limited from speaking. So that's one thing. I also want to address an issue that has been brought before council over and over and over again, and that's our unhoused. And I appreciate the Borough Manager's presentation tonight that affirms what we've known all along, that Pottstown is seeking a lot of the burden, more of the burden than other places other than Narsetown. But it still comes back to the people who are unhoused. And I know this community, I love this community, and I know that the people of this community can come up with a solution because it's happened before. Led by the NAACP, the Rickett Center was saved. Led by the NAACP and others, the YWCA or the YMCA was saved. In 2019, we took three buses, plus people drove to Harrisburg to fight for equitable funding for our kids. In fact, when I was out there, we were out there, standing on the rotunda steps, shoulder to shoulder. Someone not from Pottstown said to me, wow, look at that. Look at those people from Pottstown with also all those different shirts on. We had NAACP Pottstown, we had YWCA, we had We Are Pottstown shirts. And they said, all coming together for a common goal. And that's what we're missing in the whole unhoused situation, a common goal. What is it that we want? We certainly all are compassionate people and want our unhoused to be housed, to be fed, to get training, mentoring, whatever services they need. And the permanent shelter will be a step toward that because that permanent shelter is not permanent housing. It is a pathway to sustainable housing. So I know that we can do this. I know that we have bright people. I know that we have caring people. And so alls I'm asking is that we work together. And this isn't incumbent on just council. This is everybody out there who complains and vents and frustration because I want us to be noted as a community who's caring and can solve problems. Rather than what I read about us in USA Today in their January 30th article titled, Could Helping the Homeless Get You Criminally Charged? More Churches Get in Trouble? And it listed Houston, place of churches in Arizona, Oregon, Ohio, and Pottstown, Pennsylvania. We were in that article. And so I know for the community that I love, we can do better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey. That was good, Marlene.
And lastly, we have Doug Slick.
Good evening, everyone. My custom is to start my comments with a positive slate. And to me, it was a no-brainer for this month. The World Atlas listed our town as one of the best towns in Pennsylvania to visit. The World Atlas listed our town as one of the best towns in Pennsylvania to visit this year. Now, I didn't know about this website, so I looked them up. They serve 165 million readers at their website. Dedicated to publishing resources in geography, sociology, democracy, environment, economics, politics, and travel since 1994. They mentioned Memorial Park, Potts Grove Manor, 18th century Georgian mansions, National Registry of Historic Places, the Carousel, and the Premium Outlets. A little outside of Pottstown, but close enough. So once again, you know, good things do happen here and they were recognized. Mr. Keller, thank you for that presentation, that was fantastic. I don't know if your offer extends to the public, but I would love a copy. Sure. That would be awesome, thank you. My comments tonight were actually going to dovetail very well with your presentation. Last month, the theme that I took home was we need to work together, as Mrs. Armato was saying, and several council members sort of talked about that toward the end of the meeting last month. And so I'd like to point out that I sent you all a summary of the Monco 30% Project Forum that took place last week. So I am ringing. And so one of the things that happened there was a state representative, Napoleon Nelson, came to speak, among other speakers, and he talked about his legislation he's pushing in the State House called the CHAMP Act. Like we are the champions. It stands for Combating Homelessness Across Municipalities. The legislation would require each municipality to develop a housing obligation plan so that it can offer shelter to their own residents should they have the need. The CHAMP Act does not mandate that municipalities build, maintain, or finance a shelter, but it does mandate that the municipality be aware of what number of residents might be in need of housing at any given time and have a plan to intervene when needed. And so we talked tonight about the concerns that we hear that Pottstown and Norristown are sheltering the majority of the burden. And this act would basically charge the surrounding communities to step up and have housing available for their residents. As Representative Nelson pointed out, currently, there's a motivational disconnect. Those with the, this is his words, those with the responsibility don't have the authority and those with the authority don't have the responsibility. And what he means by that is the county doesn't have the authority over municipal zoning to force any locality to build a shelter. But the municipality doesn't have the obligation to provide the housing. So his act is to sort of connect those two things, not in a punitive fashion, but just lets everybody step up and get it together. Mark Boris with the Access Services told us that evening that folks who lose their housing tend to stay in the same area where they've been living. Just because they weren't noticed before doesn't mean they came from another area. People only move when they have to in order to survive. The CHAMP Act allows for local residents to remain in the community where they have their support network, their doctors, their schools, their food pantries, and offer housing. Proof of six months residency would be required under his legislation. I've actually already encouraged Representative Cerisi to consider co-sponsoring the CHAMP Act. I think this is an excellent opportunity for our community to reach across the levels of government and speak to this representative. He's in the 154th, which is like Cheltenham, Jenkentown area. So if we could reach out to him, I'm sure he is in his office and probably he personally would be happy to interact with us. He's a very dynamic and, you know, forward-thinking guy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That concludes public comment.
Okay. And from our counselors, Counselor Prosser.
Well, usually I talk about warm and fuzzy things, discussion, but I definitely hear you on the trash. And particularly this month seemed to be particularly bad. I'm certainly, I'm not faulting our LNI department, I mean, our borough's what, five and a half, you know, square miles, not be able to get to everything. But I'm very happy to hear that, I believe, Justin, our new online complaint system would be something that people could report.
Yeah, and I talked to Public Works today and we're going to get out and hopefully start sweeping here soon, next couple of weeks.
Yeah, because usually, I mean, it's at least what I've seen, it's, I read their weather reports and they say like high winds, I always cringe because I know, you know, in my opinion, at least in the first quarter, contributed most of the, you know, the street trash is, well, sure, people throwing it, but not the residents not throwing away their trash properly in their bins. It would be overflowing with garbage or if they, I believe there might have been an eviction or somebody moved out on my alley and then there was just insane amounts of trash bags over there that were ripped through for people looking for scrap metal. And then I called that immediately, if you see anything like that, I really urge anybody that sees, you know, you don't live there. Just, you know, call it in, you call me, you know, call, you know, the Borough Bureau Online thing because within hours, it was just all over the entire, you know, alley. It was just pretty rough and it's, just call it in, just don't assume somebody else will.
Counselor Remy.
I was going to say no, but I'm just going to make a comment on Ryan's comment. Just so our licensing and inspections gets a pat on the back. I had somebody reach out to me that has had a consistent trash problem. And it was with a store, so hopefully we can get you some help. And they thanked me for LNI reaching out to them and following up. We can't say that the problem solved forever, but they felt good that it was addressed and somebody reached out to them and talked to them and it wasn't through an email, it was a phone call and it was personal and she appreciated that. So that's all for tonight.
Vice President Libidinsky. Counselor Lindsey.
So. Where am I going to start? The trash. There has been constituents coming to council meetings about the trash. And that's one of the reasons why it was on my mind to try to figure out what can we do as a village? Because, you know, I'm all about the village. And we have a tendency to get away from that village atmosphere. With this, hopefully, we can, if we get a street, we can encourage folks to come out and take pride in their area. At least that's what I'm going to do. Because I'm going to be, I'm going to have, I'm going to have one, I'm going to, I'm going to have a street that I'm going to take care of. And I'm going to have the people who live there help me take care of their street. It's Black History Month and I want to share with you one of my favorite black historians. And that's Harriet Tubman. And why I, she is one, she's my favorite. And why? Because you have to think about the era that she lived in. And she was a slave. And she knew in her heart that this was wrong. And despite all the negativity, all the people saying, no, you can't, it's been like this and it's always been like this. But in her heart, she was, she was like, this is not right. So she had faith. She tried it a couple of times, she was like, oh no, I'm scared. Because she hear the people telling her, no, you can't do that. You can't be free. But in her heart, she knew she was supposed to be free. Can't read, can't write, can't swim, and she made it. Because she had faith. She had that faith and that's how I am with Pottstown, because I have faith. Like Marlene said, I know, I know how we are here. I know the love that we have for these kids, for our, for our community. I know that. And all you need is a mustard seed, I forgot to bring my mustard seeds. But I know, I forgot and I found them and I even cleaned out the, anyway. I know we have, I know we have this. We come together for the cemetery to do the cleanup. We come together for Juneteenth, we come together for the Fourth. We can come together to clean up the streets and for our unhoused, our homeless, our vulnerable. I don't know, there's a couple of names and I'm not sure which one to say, but I know we can do this. Because we are Pottstown, it has a right there on Marlene's shirt. So that's one of my things and I wanted to let you know how her faith, can you imagine back then? Her faith, come on. It was a struggle, but she had faith and she did it, came back and freed more people. So when you think you can't do stuff, think about Harriet Tubman's struggle when she was trying to, when she knew things wasn't right. And she freed herself and she freed others. So that's in my little tidbit. And my Black History, Happy Black History Month, everybody.
Counselor Minestra, comment?
Well, I'd like to agree with my friend here. Okay, because there isn't anything that we can't do, some things we shouldn't. But anyway. I would like to say thank you to our new Borough Manager who has unbridled energy now and I, no, you have.
Saying you knew now.
You!
You knew now.
I am, yes, I am saying that, I don't know, I haven't, this is.
Isn't that good?
This, this report that you did showed, it was spectacular, you did a wonderful job. And then on top of that, we have the Adopt a Street program and you know why? Because this dude's over here.
That's what I'm talking about.
Absolutely.
That's what I'm talking about.
And he's helping this guy.
Teamwork, make the dream work.
So.
That's right. Teamwork.
I don't know why we didn't have some, this dude over here.
It's Justin trying to think he can try to bow by himself.
We obviously needed him. We obviously needed him.
Yeah. You're welcome.
Yes. Take whatever credit you want, Lisa Bagby gets it.
I'd agree for it though.
But yeah, no, I really appreciate the professionalism and the solving of the problems and the attempts. Thanks, guys, cool.
Truly a team effort.
It is, teamwork, make the dream work.
Be careful, they'll ask for raises.
Hey, hey.
That's it.
Hey, hey.
Counselor Kirkland, anything?
I don't talk much, but something's been bothering me lately. And it's like random thoughts, so forgive me if it sounds off the wall at times. But I really need to get off Facebook. Because one thing that bothers me when I read articles and then you have the comments after the articles, you know? And I'm I'm becoming more and more aware of black issues, African-American issues, things like that. And because I was, I was raised in an all-white community, okay? My family was the only black people in the school district. And, you know, I was, you know, first grade through 12th grade, all, you know, you know? And I remember when I was about to come to Philadelphia to go to college, I couldn't wait to get to Philadelphia, to be around my people. I couldn't wait, I was like, oh man, you know, be able to date black women, be able to, you know, just know black people and black friends. I was so excited to come to Philadelphia. And it really didn't disappoint me, I met a lot of good friends still, you know, a lot of good friends and everything, but lately, and this is just my opinion, you don't have to share it. But lately, it just seems like there's such a warfare against black people. To me, it seems like, I mean, you read these comments, I mean, the hateful, the hateful nature in these comments. You know, and it stirs up stuff in me that I don't, I don't want to feel towards people. Like I said, I grew up in a white community and I have so many friends and it stirs up feelings in me that I don't like feeling, okay? And I remember even not too long ago, a white evangelical Christian told me that racism doesn't exist anymore. Okay? And she said that we're the racist ones because we're the ones that keep bringing it up, dividing the country. We're dividing the country because we bring it up. Okay? Then you see, you know, political party just openly now, they're not even trying to hide it. Openly just getting rid of black history in schools, openly, you know, keeping people from voting, you know? It's bold now, they're not even trying to hide it anymore. Okay? And, you know, and to me, I just wish people could understand. You know, the way I see it is that we built this country. Yeah, it was years and years ago, but the thing is generational money just down and down and down. We built this country, okay? Because back in those days, we supplied cotton to the world. Okay? And that cotton came up from black backs. Okay? We supplied cotton to the world and that created the wealth in this country that made it what it is today. That same wealth made this country what it is today. Forget the 400 years ago, whatever it is, that same wealth made this country what it is today. Okay? Yeah, presidential candidates, this country was never racist. You know, I mean, it's just, it's just seemed like something that's planned, it seems like, because you hear it more now from a lot of people. So I'm just saying, you know, just, you know, read up, you know, and see what we've made, the contributions we've made to this country. People just don't know. You know? And the way they're trying to, to get rid of, you know, black history in this country, people will never know. They never will know. And that's the intent. That's the intent for them to never know. Okay, so it's just random thoughts. I'm proud of Black History Month and I'm hoping people, non-black people will take time to, to see and appreciate what black people have done for this country. That's all. Thanks.
Thanks.
That's a good one. Okay. By the numbers, it is my time to reappoint people to committees. And because of the wonderful job they all did in the past year, I'll make a blanket reappointment of all the people to the committees you've been proudly serving on. And thank you for your work on those committees. Can't think of anything else to add other than what a presentation.
Thank you.
That was phenomenal. That's all for me, media adjourned.